Welcome. We begin tonight's meeting with approval of the village board meetings from January 4th, 2024.
What are your emotions? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? No?
On paper?
I oppose.
Citizen comments? If they wish to address anything on the agenda?
How about the agenda?
Is it restricted to the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay. Seventy-five, twenty-seven, Washington Street, Baldensville. Two things. Because I'm not technologically advanced, could you put the agenda on Facebook as well? Could they be put up there? I had a heck of a tack. I had to call my brother to see how to get to the agenda.
You asked your brother?
No, that's how desperate I was. I was very desperate. I finally got it. I finally got it. And I said, if you can just put it on Facebook too, please. Thank you. And also, I see on the agenda that you're going to discuss about the changing the election to June. I just want you to know that I'm in support. Thank you.
James Miller, two Division Street. I have a question about the election in March. In the past, there's been very little parking here. Is there any plan to move that to the senior center where there's plenty of parking and normal elections are held? Or is it going to be the same issue that we've had year over year?
The first person ever heard a suggestion of moving it to somewhere else. I couldn't imagine it to be adjusted out there while everyone's here at work.
Well, that's the thing. I mean, I've been, I go, voted in every single election. And there are times when there is no place to park. And the inclination is to just leave because it's staying cold out in March.
And I don't know the availability of the senior center's parking lot from 12 o'clock on. I mean, they're busy lots of times also.
But that's where normal elections are held.
Normal for who?
Let's see.
I vote, I vote in the Methodist church.
But, you know, it's, they've got plenty of parking. And, you know, I live near there, so I go by frequently. And it's pretty much always clear unless there's a particular time where they're heading to go or something like that. So I want to make this suggestion because I know it, especially with all the restaurants that we have that are doing very well now, parking has become very challenging.
I'm sure we could post that, Mayor, for that day for election. We could have spots reserved for people that are voting. It's not like they're going to be in here for an hour at a time. So we could designate some spots right behind the building here, wherever Chuck and I could work on that without any trouble.
Or back, park the police cars along that side. And then all places that says police parking, no, I'll park there.
Yeah, no. Yeah, we can, we can, Chuck and I can, can work that out.
Okay, if you guys would discuss that. And Ruth, if you can look on your calendar, March 19th, what it looks like. Make sure you're having a St. Patrick's Day dinner or something that would. And then we will go forth after we figure it out.
Legally, is there any issue with, has it already been posted that, that election will be here?
Well, it's posted with coming out, so that's something we have to.
Yeah. I'm wondering if we could even, you know, go beyond just posting a few spots and maybe like have, have this municipal lot on election day be 30-minute parking or, you know, 20-minute parking or something. Ask the employees if they could park over, you know, one day over in the, in the, behind the, where am I pointing? By the cottage or the public lot over there, you know. Or do maybe, you know. Yeah. You know, make some accommodations just to make it easier on people. I, I live half a block away, so I just walk down anyway. So it's not that big a deal to me. And I come down and.
All they pose, you park at your house.
Fuck, they can. It's a single lane, it's a single lane driveway. So it's the first person in, it's going to be the last person out.
Thanks for bringing it up. It never occurred to me that there was a parking issue out there.
Oh, yeah.
Because I would, I always park over Charlotte, the wall we crossed. Don't you want to look in there?
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Hi, Jim Dale, Seventy Els, Beagle Street. I want to start with some good news. So we're doing our accounting at the B and B and we're taking a look at some things that were trends this past year. Twenty-three state vacations. That means local people who came to the B and B and thought Baldensville was good enough to spend a decent amount of time in. And so that I wanted to share. I also wanted to share the fact that this past year, we had 18 execs from Micron State that Baldensville B and B, all looking for homes. Of course, I sent them to Liverpool. No, that's not true. Man, I just heard back from one who, who may have found a property in, in the town of LaSandra that is going to be worked out for them. So those are all great things that are happening in and around. And we see it anecdotally from what people say as they come to the B and B and say, we had one of our busiest and best years this year. We had a 94% occupancy between May and October 31st. And that's, that's pretty, pretty full. And so we're, we're happy about that. But most importantly, people that come to Baldensville, they really like it here. So on that note, I'm going to switch gears a little bit. My second topic is the, moving the election to June. I've been thinking about it quite a bit. And unfortunately, I really think that it doesn't solve a lot of the issues other than the weather. You still have four elections that are going to happen. If it's in June, you're still up against a week later, the school board elections. This particular year is difficult because you can also have a presidential primary that's going to happen. So you'll have that going on before the November election. And that makes it a little tougher. I think if we could find a way to move it to, to November, I think it would work out best for everybody. And anecdotally, I've spoken to about 60 people in the last couple of weeks. And from the ones that did know it was actually going to happen in March, I didn't get much objection to having moved to November. But the majority of people, including one woman who swore to me that I had it wrong, it was always in November. That one I can't explain. But she wanted me to come back with proof that it was, it was really in March. In any case, I'll reinforce my support for moving it to November. And I know that I had discussed moving it to June at the last trustee meeting. And I wondered if we had resolved what the issue was with the having two referendums or having, having two dates.
This was brought up to the board of elections and to the state. And to be honest, at this point, they do not have an answer and they're still looking into it.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Okay. If they don't know, I don't know who would in the room, right? Board of Elections doesn't know. Yeah, okay. And lastly, I wondered, readdress something I know that you had mentioned, the Main Street grant program last night. And the application, I'm assuming, is being made available. But we had some projects going on in the village in the last couple of years. The street, the sidewalk program and the streetscape program. Some of that funding was available. And I wondered just get a progress report on the first D streets, the sidewalk program. So I haven't seen any sidewalks going. Obviously not now, but this past, past summer.
Do I answer?
Anybody, anybody up there? Anybody who knows?
Doing two sidewalks this past summer, there was not a sidewalk program. We had replaced all of the existing sidewalks. So now it's opening a new chapter to explore whether we pursue that program, adding sidewalks to areas that never had a sidewalk.
Wasn't that a part of the original proposal?
No, no, that wasn't. No, the program from day one was to get the side, old sidewalks so you could walk on without falling on your face. When former mayor Joe Saracini and I walked home from a village board meeting.
And you both fell on your faces.
And on North Street, no, we chose to walk down the street out of the sidewalk. This isn't right.
Yeah, okay. We like to promote that we're a walking village to the, to the board to stick up to the B and B. I want to make sure they're not falling on their faces either.
Main Street update. We issued, well, we issued checks and signed some vouchers for $31,000 going back to business owners who invested in their storefronts and took part in the program. So it's going. We just closed out 2019. There's 2019, I don't know, was there a 2020? That would disappear with COVID. There's a 2021, there's a 2023. Maybe only do odd years.
Probably just slow this down when people working it out in the extended.
You know what else COVID did? COVID took the price of your original estimate and tripled it.
Yeah, that's why I didn't get one because I didn't want to do it back then.
So I know somebody, the first man, that, that was awarded the grants, had a budget by a professional engineer. And then when they went to do the work, we got estimates, it was three times what they thought. And therefore that money's got back in the box. So 2021, there are, there are businesses who are doing their projects that opted to go forward. There are some that have completed those projects. And there's, 2023 is, that, that year's batch is almost done, I think. It's 2021, as Mike says, COVID materials all of a sudden were, unless you applied, it went up from 18 to 80. And there were no people to do the work if you could get the materials. So that, those guys are in a bind because they have, they're stuck with a number they had. They can re-imply in this one round, start over.
I see, okay. Oh, yeah, we, we want to know where we might stand because we're B and B and we're not, we're in residential neighborhood. That does allow guest houses, but we are a business, so.
I would have, you'd have to submit that and find out. I'd try to, I'd pretend to answer that.
Okay, yeah.
It's a business. It's not restricted to the defined business district that we have. For example, Jim Nobles, Nobles Tires, Ken's Building, both of those businesses have taken advantage of it. They're not in the business district. I'm sure there's others and I'm just not. But indeed, I was going to mention this, there is a 2024 program. You've got till mid-February to get that in, contact the codes office. And, you know, this doesn't mean you have to tear off the front of your building and.
Right.
I think you'll look at what's happened over Sheens, for example. They've been through it a couple of times. They did windows, they did some painting.
Yeah, we'd like to put back our porch and the, the repurposed orange on the, on the end.
All I would say is codes enforcement officer here knows far more about it than the rest of us in town.
Who, who is the new codes enforcement?
Tim Gany?
Yep, Tim Gany.
Gany, okay.
Codes at baldensville.org.
Yeah, that one I know. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
As I say, Sally, you're the only one left.
I'm helping. I fell down and my sciatic problem switched from the left side to the right side. And I'm like, it's 40 years on one side, I don't know what to do with this side. Anyway, I wanted to endorse the June or keeping it in March, but I think June is a little better just in terms of weather. I had a tax appointment last year in March and the whole system shut down. And so I got bumped to the middle of April for my tax appointment because, so things happen in March, less likely to happen in June, where people could attend. But we need more advertising men on it. Definitely. Like a lot.
Are there any other comments? If not, move on to trustee's comments. And we'll go to the right side, Joe.
I'll stick to the agenda.
That was right, it's not incorrect. Okay.
Hey, I will stick to the agenda.
Same for me, just the agenda.
I'm going to move to the agenda.
I'm not going to be any different. Come on, Eric.
I'll stick to the agenda.
Huh, go pills. For once, I wrote down some comments. And one of them was the Main Street Grant, we've already mentioned, but I'm going to mention it again, that we have a Main Street Program Grant, which allows business owners in the community to address basically the facades or areas that would make their, their structures more sound or look, their appearance better. Windows, painting, whatever it may be. Those applications need to be in by mid-February. Questions, contact the codes office. I'm saying I'm proud of the way the community has taken advantage of them in the past. If you look at many of our businesses, the street side is much nicer than it used to be. And I'm going to stop and not say anything more about that. Second thing I want to bring up, and we will try to mention this as often as we can, village elections, March 19th. They're from 12 to nine. I'm not going to say where. I assume at this point they'll be already here. Let's assume they'll be here unless we come forth with other ideas and public will be informed. So, March 19th, encourage everybody to vote. Voting is very important to me. And I urge this from the vantage point that the best way to protect your right to vote is to exercise your right to vote. As soon as you've stopped voting, that opens a door for someone else to determine maybe that you don't need to vote or change how you vote or whatever. I do want to reassure everybody that this Baldensville's not located in the South. There's no suppression of voting going on here other than weather. But once again, emphasize, please vote. What else? Moving down. Did, 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 did. Nope, I think that covers everything. I'll stick to the agenda for the rest of the meeting. Moving on to department heads, moving to our attorney.
Just a couple of things. The, just as a matter of information, in the governor's budget that I don't believe has been passed yet, oh, there is a group that extends the virtual meeting attendance, which we had discussed in the past, to July 1, 2026. If you recall, that allowed members of the board to attend virtually and to be, to vote and be counted, well, not counted, but to vote and participate under certain circumstances. That was due to expire and she, it's now in the budget to be extended to, to 2026. The other thing, just to kind of follow along with what the mayor's been discussing, there's also provisions, of course, in the budget for the downtown revitalization for water. So I think it would be good for the village to take a look at, seeing what possible grant money that is out there for, for some of the projects that the village has, because those are back in the, in the budget again. So other than that, I will stick with the agenda.
Can I ask a question on the, the virtual meeting thing? I remember when that first came up, the, I'll say the definition of what those extenuating or extraordinary circumstances are. Was that something we were supposed to define?
Yes.
And I don't think we.
They never really did.
Yeah. So is that something we need to?
Yeah, I mean, if this goes through, I think we could have the, the bill of draft a policy or resolution as to what extenuating circumstances are.
Do you have any examples of what other communities have done?
I definitely, I mean, I'll have to tell them ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd be, you know, pulling things from out of air without some sort of guidance on, on what those circumstances would be.
Yeah, and the other thing too, we can part of that is you can be, you can attend virtually if you are in a place that's open to public participation. So I suppose that means that somebody could, could be attending virtually from a downtown bar, but I'm not sure. I'll take a look.
Bruce is considering that.
No, I think you weren't. There's some weird things though, if you were attending off-site, you had to make some 24-hour notice so the public could come to your house or to your bar or whatever.
If you were going to be in a place that was publicly available, then if, if not publicly available, then that's when the extenuating circumstances rule comes in.
Okay. They're like, open up your, how old are your front door or something if you were at your house?
Straight into your 75, 80.
Make sure that was not closed or something. I think that was a motive.
Yeah. So maybe if you could find some.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Examples for us. Thank you.
Moving on to the village code, after she notes that.
I will stick to the agenda, thank you.
And to moving to the treasurer.
Mark. I have two agenda items. I'll stick to those, but I want to be sure. We just discussed the pilot situation about the budget. Budget's good to go. And then if there's any questions about the modifications to this year's budget that are in the other. And to, to Mr. Dale's point about the Main Street Grant, we're going to modify the budget again tonight as we get money in. People are approved, we get money in and then we, we pay that money out. Those stay in concert with each other. But we're at $165,000 that we paid out this year. So it has been a good year.
You're up, Ruth.
I would like to thank the Baldensville Rotary Foundation for a recent grant to the senior center. We're going to use the funds to purchase storage racks for some of our exercise equipment and we very much appreciate that. Just want to mention a couple other programs. There's a program on January 31st, which is a Wednesday at 10:30. It's a historic kind of program, growing up during World War II in the 1950s. Everyone's welcome to come out and take part in that. And also want to let folks know that the mobile mammography van will be back at the senior center on February 6th. That's Tuesday. You do need an appointment, so you can give us a call and we'll give you the number to reach out to or check the village website and our information's posted there. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions. Thanks.
People don't want to come out to vote in March for an election. I'm not sure anybody I know would want to come out in February for a matter. No, it's, it's the day and out of the works.
Hopefully it's beaten.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, really.
Sorry, Chuck.
You're up. Couple quick things. The, the traffic plate at Donner Street at Frawley, everything's in motion to get that taken down, just so people know, we're going to be putting stop signs, one up on Frawley, one up on the Red Eight side. All we're waiting for now is power company to terminate, terminate the power. Once that happens, we should be good and that'll, that'll be taken down. Circuit signal's going to come in and do it. And everything's in place, we're just waiting for the termination of power. So, and another quick reminder, the municipal parking lots are made for parking and people that, that live in some of the apartments in the area, they can park in them, they cannot store the vehicles in them. We've had problems for years with, with people storing vehicles. We had, we had one gentleman that was there all winter and we had him move and he had to put a battery in his car because they just hadn't moved out winter. Since the code's been changed, they can only be there for three consecutive days. And we did, we did remove one last week that was, it was there for over three weeks with flat tires. So just to remind people, you can park there, but you can't store your vehicles there. Are that plus your questions?
How long are you collecting or have you stopped collecting Christmas trees?
We're still doing it. We kind of just keep doing it until they, until they fizzle out.
I see a couple of people in my neighborhood that are asking how, how long?
Yeah, we've, you know, I'm sure we'll, we'll do it a couple more weeks and then if, if we see a bunch of them, I will go out. You know, if everybody would put them up sooner or later, we'd appreciate that. But if not, we'll, we'll get them. As long as you're mentioning Christmas trees, I'd like to remind people that, especially if the tree's coming out now, I'm sure the needles are coming off. It's great to have that plastic bag to catch the needles, but take it off the tree at the street because our guys aren't going to take them. Right. We can't, we can't. The grinder won't. Well, it will, but who wants? Yeah, that's right. Yeah, they don't accept them. So that's a good point. The tree stands also. Yeah.
Yeah, trees stands, they do. We had a drone this year too, so.
Somebody forgot to open the president.
They want a drone on the tree. Moving on to our police chief.
Just be a chat unless there's questions, Mayor.
Any questions? Go ahead. I'm going to bounce back to Mayor's comments because I always think about things afterwards. We wanted to, to the board as well as anybody else, kind of what I've been up to since we last got together today, for example, was a meeting I've been put on to the Route 31 Traffic Corridor Study Committee, which was enlightening. Group from Boston doing a study because of the impacts of Micron and Baldensville is the Western hub, which I pointed out to them, it's already congested. And anything they do that streamlines traffic this way, we need to figure out. We recommended revisiting the 631 bridge, that kind of stuff. Kevin Rhodes chimed in to support that. Pointed out that, you know, Route 31, still, we want pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, Route 31, we've had people struck trying to walk to Baldensville from Rattuston area. So whatever, that, this was a kickoff meeting. In another two months, there'll be another one. And I will try to remember, put on the agenda, inform everybody what transpires. Also wanted to let you know that I met with a supervisor in the town of Van Buren. And I'm meeting with a supervisor at town of LaSandra tomorrow to look for ways we can collaborate efficiently, do things, support the senior center, so make sure we're on the same page, going in the same direction whenever possible. And also from my perspective, to remind them that every resident of the village is a resident of the town. Because sometimes the town boards forget that those of us living in the village do live in their towns also. Just a friendly reminder. And Bobby mentioned grants. I've been, two different meetings of mayors and chasing down, except a meeting to meet with a grants writing company. I did reach out to the person you referenced, who we have not yet been able to speak, you know, telephone tag and stuff, pursuing that. Because in my research, when I first came into office, I came across all these grant opportunities I believe we missed out on. And that, you know, the date was passed, that maybe we could have pursued in the past. So hopefully that's a stone we can turn over in the future. And then I'm going to announce that Rachel May awarded us $361,000. It's in a, something called a dormitory grant. It's one of those kind of grant systems. It takes a significant amount of time, has to be approved. So we won't have use of those funds for anywhere from six to 18 months. But the concept was to replace an aging street sweeper. We sweep the state of the streets, not just our own streets, we keep, it's an environmental thing to keep debris out of the waterway. This all, everything goes down the storm sewers. Yet to do the paperwork to process it, but, but that's in the works. Just, just information for you guys. And we'll keep looking. Now on to the agenda. Their motion, the document proposed 2024, 2023 village budget. Second. Discussion. Do you want to end, Mr. Treasurer?
Yeah. Just real quick, last, last meeting, I asked her to wait just till this meeting because of the, what had come up at the 11th hour was a question about the pilot for Baldensville, senior housing LLC at the Conifer Village. In fact, that pilot is still not executed. I don't believe. And so they don't believe it's going to change, and they believe it'll be executed very, very soon. But as Bob so eloquently pointed out to them, it's been five years since they signed the intent to seek a pilot. And kind of wondering what's going on. But the reality is, we're down the road budget-wise. They're not on the tax roll anymore, and Osida has said we're going to get a pilot payment from, signed or not. So that's the budget that we have. If that changes, we'll have to deal with it as it happens. But we don't have any better information than that, and there isn't any further course of action right now with that. It's kind of out of our hands, and we just have to go forward with what we have. I'm confident that it will work.
Some of like in my talk, the worst-case scenario was our revenue might be off by $10,000 or so.
Yeah, their pilot, when they come off the tax roll, their pilot, their initial pilot payments are generally higher than what their taxes were. And but they increase at a slower pace than the normal tax level it would. So at some point, those lines cross each other, and they start paying less. And so their taxes this year would have been around in the high $30,000 range, and now they're going to be 40-something, in the 40s. So we make out better in the first years of a pilot, but we have to get paid too. So and I don't know what the issue is. I don't think it's anything to do with the village Baldwillsville. It's Osida and the property owner.
Originally, it was something, they signed the wrong agreement. There was a question about whether the increase of the pilot payments was going to be 1% or 2%. And I've heard two stories. One said, well, no, they, they wanted two, but then they settled on one. And then I talked, two days ago, with attorney Kevin McCollough, who was the attorney who presented it here, and he said, no, no, we went from one to two. So now they say it's going to be 2%. So we'll wait and see. As they say, stay tuned to this pencil.
Osida said they have documentation that is, the escalator, they call it, is the higher of the two numbers. And it's signed documentation. So they're like, we're confident that we're going to get what we said. So.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions, any comments? And you pointed out that last time, the tax rate will increase to about 10 cents per thousand, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. On to item B, was a discussion regarding the 2024 elections and a referendum to be added to the March ballot to move the election to June. I believe that was a motion that Mike made and got tabled.
Eric made it.
Yeah, I made it.
Okay, so we got tabled. So now we need to act.
Do we?
We just leave it tabled forever?
You could leave it tabled if you want. I mean, I would still like to pursue it, but I'll leave that up to the rest of the board, you know, their thoughts on it. So I think I've talked enough on this issue, but I'll let you all.
I think we tabled it because we weren't sure about the question of what happens if the petition gets signed for moving it to November. So.
And I discussed this with the Board of Elections, and they're really not sure. They, you can't have a multiple-choice question on the referendum, and both of them would have to appear. So the question is whether they would both be passed, in which case that would be a problem. So my suggestion is that the board is feeling that they want to, that you want to make the changes, and you're thinking of making it to June. My recommendation would be it'd be better to do it earlier to get the matter on, so that those that want to change it to November, you can say, look, let's just see if this passes. Because if the majority of people, if in the March election, the majority of the voters wanted June, then that's what, that was the answer the public assumes. And if it doesn't, it doesn't pass, then they could file a petition, or the village could do something relative to changing it to November.
And a resolution is a yes-no vote, right?
Yes. No, maybe so.
Can't have two ballot measures to say one. Should we move this to June? Yes or no? Or should we move this to November? Yes or no?
Yes, you can do that, and they could go.
If they both get more yes votes than no votes, then they technically both pass.
And there would be a, the one that got more would be the.
Does one trump the other? As far as if we were to vote this referendum on the ballot now, does that mean?
Yeah, does a board referendum trump a?
Have the referendum just gone? Because it's already.
No, just not. They always have the right to do that. But the question is whether by the board taking action, the people who would like to see it changed, and we're talking about November, they might want to wait and see what happens.
Whether they feel that they're willing to accept a compromise in intermediate and see whether that works.
Otherwise, this is going to end up, and again, the question, if the petitions come in, they would have to be reviewed to see if they're valid. And if there's not a determination by a certain date that the petition is valid, then of course that creates other issues. So it needs, they need 200 names and registered voters.
Can you say reviewed for early? Does the Board of Elections do that?
No, they could just petition to the village, so it would be.
Yes, to do that.
If we were to move on that, but then from not that, the petitions came in, could we rescind ours at that point?
Yeah, I think you've got until March 1st, basically, to make decisions.
So if we were to move on this then, and didn't get anything by March 1st, we would already have it in place. If something came before March 1st, we could just pull this one off the table and go move. Or table.
Depends on what your priorities are, because then you've taken March off, or you've taken June off the table. You might end up with November. Again, you don't know who's going to be turning out in March.
As a board, do we feel like a June election is where we want to go, where we want to add, or?
I feel a November election, the village becomes a grandstand in a sandbox. We lose some of what defines us as a village. June doesn't do that because it's still a village election. I understand the concept of November. There's more people voting, so they're already there. Probably turnout numbers is higher.
We have plans to continue to educate the public on when the, when the elections are, who's running, what their, you know, what their ideas are, things of that nature, all that type of stuff. So it's, it will improve drastically. That is going to be a priority of ours.
It'd be nice to give.
The nomination will improve. It will guarantee that vote will come out. That's people's choices.
Correct.
Just, if I could, a petition is coming.
We don't.
I mean, you're looking at something that the numbers are already there. Just want to throw that there.
I understand. I also would, I would remind everybody that New York State is a representative of democracy. If we were California, we'd have propositions on what color the police cars are and everything else under the sun. This board is charged with the responsibility to make decisions. And in my mind, charged with trying to do what they believe is in the best interest of the village and the citizens that reside with it. I just want to remind folks of that.
I agree with you. But a referendum doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to pass.
No. No, not at all.
Right.
So let's just leave it tabled. You got to hit something, though. Yeah, you got to hit something here. Whether it's this meeting or next meeting, I don't really know. But really, the difference is.
But we'll have two meetings in February, right? So I say we keep it. We still could move. If we don't receive petition in time.
But we won't know, though, until March 1st, you said, was the deadline?
Yes.
And our second meeting in February is February 15.
Right. But the petition may not come in until February 29th, because there are 29 days in February this year.
I mean, we, the petition's coming now that we know that, now that March 1st has been documented, it's, they're going to have it in time. So I don't think that's anything we're going to, you know, that that's going to be a possibility. So I say we continue to work on trying to move it to June, see what happens with that. If people tend to like the June election date change, you know, maybe that might change their mind a little bit. Well, I mean, June's better than March, I assure you that. We get more voter turnout. Yeah. It's going to be, I would imagine it's going to be more successful. I understand it's going to be, you know, complicated with school board, like what you're talking about. I get that, but.
I thought school board was in May.
Yeah.
Not a lot of weeks in these one.
One other thing, too, is that in the November election, as far as candidates for the village board, their signs are going to be pretty much taken over by the general election signs. Whereas in June, if it's in June, there's nobody else posting signs for elections. So that could allow more publicity to the candidates.
I want to reemphasize the concern that once we're into a November timeframe, we are Democrats and Republicans and conservatives. The independent party stuff disappears. And now you're going to have party committees selecting who runs for seats, and party committees pulling the strings on getting people elected, and even suggesting how you might vote on something.
Just as a note, the school budget vote is May 21st this year. So if we were the second week in June.
It's the third.
Third week, then it would be five weeks difference.
Yeah.
I mean, this year, obviously, wouldn't.
It won't be then.
Two years from now, how will be your typical, similar stance?
And if it's moved to June, the snow won't be covering the signs like they do sometime in March.
We'll see about that.
And that'll give us an extra parking spot.
I was going to say four or five parking spots.
Might open up to, you don't have to worry about the weather in November.
Okay. I want to find out what the board wants to do. Joe, you want to table or you want to act tonight?
I think we should just act.
Hey.
I'm prepared.
Ruth.
I'm ready for June.
Okay.
I'm ready moving forward.
I'll, I'd like to table, but I'll, I will obviously vote if I.
Right. Eric?
Ready to act.
Bruce?
I'll call a question. Then, you know, if a majority of the board is ready to act, I don't see a great deal of reason to wait.
We could also pull it back off the table.
I would assume we can rescind.
I often tell us we couldn't. I think we're creating all kinds of new wrinkles for election officials to figure out.
That gives Bob something to do.
I have a resolution here.
Pardon?
I have a resolution prepared in case you want to adopt it.
Oh.
You see.
Okay.
Well, no, this is coming up, so I figured I would, for the minutes. And basically, as I say, among the things, it should not become effective until and unless it's been approved at the next general election held within the village by the affirmative vote of a majority of qualified electors of the village voting upon the proposition. So.
And it would be to move future.
It would be for June, it would be June of 2026.
The first.
Okay. Now let me throw something in. If, if we pass that, and let's say the people with a petition decide, okay, let's wait and see what happens or not, and that passes, then they come forth in 2020, whenever, later on, after the election, with a petition which would create either a special election or put it back on the ballot to go to November. That would, that could happen, correct?
Could happen, yes. They could file a petition and move it back to March. I mean, but I think at some point, the other, at some point, again, the publicity that the board and the village gives to the residents, I think is important in all of this.
Agreed. And I would hope that the village, regardless of how this falls out, the village and the 200 people that's signing.
Maybe more.
Will help to get the word out, whenever the election is, that that's when the election is. That our bottom line is we want people to vote.
If no one comes out for the March election, we're in a campaign.
Sure, can.
Well, that's true.
There's at least seven people, I can guarantee, are going to show up to vote.
You're right. But I think there's more than a hundred.
So wouldn't you want a special election in the fall, then?
I just want to reemphasize, you know, you guys talked last time about doing a better job at getting the word out. That is a compromised position, that, you know, if the, if the primary issue is voters and participation, a campaign for the March election would certainly.
We're going to put a sign in your front yard that says.
Have one.
March.
Can we put one where the banners?
So we call a question. We have Eric's motion and Bob's correction.
We need to make a new motion.
You need to, you need to actually make a motion to.
Untable it?
To untable the table motion. You need a motion second to do that. And then.
This is why they take government cases.
You need to act on that motion, or it'd be modified to whatever Mr. Baldwin is.
So I will make a motion to untable the motion from last meeting.
Seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's back on the floor.
I'll make a motion to use Bob's language to.
I'll go ahead and read it.
You want to read it, yes, thank you.
Where is section 9-912 one of the village law? The state of New York empowers the village board trustees to cause a proposition on any other questions set forth in the following subdivisions to be submitted at a regular or special village election. Such elections are defined within the election law. One of the subdivisions authorizes the question whether or not a month of the general village election should be changed. And whereas it appears to the board of trustees of the village of Baldwillsville that voter participation in the political process will be increased if such a proposition was favorably enacted by the electorate of the village, now therefore be it resolved by the board of trustees of the village of Baldwillsville in regular. in regular session duly convened as follows. Commencing in the year 2026, the annual election of the village of Baldwoodville, New York, for the election of all elective village officers shall be held in the month of June, to be held in accordance with and provided by the federal election laws and the election laws of the state of New York. In accordance with the provisions of section 9-912.1 of the Village Law of the state of New York, this resolution shall not become effective unless and until it has been approved the next general village election held within the village by the affirmative vote of a majority of the qualified electors of the village voting upon the proposition.
That's what you were going to say, right, Eric?
Yes.
Got to stand out. Joey, I was going to ask for a roll call on this roll call vote. Unless we've discussed, anybody have any discussion?
I think we did that already.
I know we haven't done one of those in a long time.
Not sure what you need.
I need you to call the technical trustees, how they vote and record that.
Trustee Cole?
Yay.
Trustee Collins?
Yay.
Trustee Seaco?
Yay.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee O'Donnell?
Yes.
Trustee Shepard?
Yes.
Trustee Reynolds?
Yes.
The motion is passed.
Just a random question, if the election does move to June, there's no requirement or need for us to change our fiscal year?
No.
At all, right?
Yeah, okay. I didn't think so, just wanted to make sure.
Good question. You want to?
And automatically, the term of office of elected officials will be extended.
Three months.
To comply with the year, the election date.
We had a new business, have a motion to approve St. Mary of the assumption churches request to sell beer and wine at the annual Lenten fish dinners on following dates, in June in 2024, February 26th, February 23rd, March 1st, March 8th, March 15th, and March 22nd.
One of those dates has got to be, that February 26th or 27th.
I think they added Ash Wednesday after they did the first Friday, I'm guessing.
That's not Ash Wednesday?
No, that's not Ash Wednesday. February 26th is a Monday.
Yeah.
Hold on. So, so February, it's going to be. 23rd is a Friday.
That'll be the 16th.
16th, it's supposed to be the 16th of the 26th.
Good catch.
March 1st, March 8th, March 15th, March 22nd.
But it's February 16th?
Yes, February 16th, yes, not the 26th.
I'll make a motion. I'll second. Discussion? This is an annual thing, it's been going on for quite some time. Get that fish dinner.
Doesn't get too roddy down there on the basement of St. Mary's Square. I've been there a couple of times.
Maybe we should suggest they do that March 19th. More turnout.
Happy election day.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Motion to approve the budget modifications as proposed in the document Budget Modifications 2024-01.18.PDF.
I'll make a motion.
I will second that. Any questions for our treasurer regarding the budget modifications? Guess everybody understands it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Is there any other business we need to bring to the board? And motion to pay bills is audited. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn the next meeting at 8:20. What? 4:00.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
I don't know what to say.